Tuesday, August the 5th, 2025 at 6:30 PM. If you would, please silence your cell phones and any other electronic devices. If you would, please stand for the prayer by Councilman Fuller and the pledge by Councilwoman Jamison.
Let everyone propose their hugs. Now, Lord, in the name of Jesus, we're coming for you once again with thanksgiving in our heart. Thank you and praise God for another day you showed us that one I promised. Now, Lord, we ask that you look upon our mouth, every councilman, every out there here, oh God, we ask that you bless us right now. Give us the wisdom and the knowledge and understanding that we might lead this great city in the right direction, for we lean and depending on you, oh God. We don't know what to do, but we know you know it. And we ask you, Lord, to bless us right now, in the mighty name of Jesus, for we love you and we thank you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Fuller, and thank you, Councilwoman Jamison. That brings us to our agenda order of approval. Do we have any changes, Ms. Chansey?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Do we have a motion by council to approve the agenda?
So move.
Motion by Councilman Jackson, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Fuller, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Just for the record to reflect and let you all know, Councilman George, he is out with the family matter right now, so that is why he's not here this evening.
There. Call in and says the host has joined.
We have joined. Does he have the correct number?
Yeah.
Let's read it. If y'all want one second, we're gonna pause and re-dial in so Councilman George can participate by phone.
Hello, please enter your six-digit conference code.
Chansey's calling again now.
Okay. We'll let Ms. Chansey proceed with the announcements.
Welcome to that conference.
The August 6th conference will be Saturday, August 9th, from 8:00 AM until 12:00 PM,
The conference has not started. You are the host. Please enter your four-digit host code to open the conference.
at the Corner Stadium of the Mall property.
You will not connect you to your call.
And Thursday, Thursday, will be August 28th, starting at 11:00 AM, at the Corner Stadium
You are the first attendee in this conference. Your host has joined.
of the Mall property.
Technology. Thank you, Ms. Chansey.
It still says that if you want to call, you can call my cell phone. You won't get it done.
Yeah. Or Councilwoman Jamison sitting here, can you call Councilman George?
I don't have his number, but if you have it, you can.
Councilman George?
I'm here.
Okay, thanks. Okay, we're at the presentation agenda on the agenda. We've already proceeded.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. The presentation agenda is the presentation by the American Legion Post 1992 regarding the resolution accepting a donation of an auto robotic drone for the Gocheck Police Department. In a moment, we will have them present it to the city, but we have to get a motion and a second and accept the donation, and then we can take over ownership of that nice donation. So do we have the presentation, of course, I just read to let you all know, we have the American Legion Post 1992, Sons of the American Legion here with us tonight to make the donation. They raised money, they got contributions to provide this to the city for our public safety, the police and fire department, and we're very gracious for all y'all do. So do we have a motion to accept the auto robotic drone from the American Legion, Sons of the American Legion Post 1992, to the City of Gocheck Police Department? A motion by Councilman Minor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jackson, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Councilman George. Do you wanna come to the front and present it? And we'll let the council stand up, and me and the police chief will accept.
Tracy, explain to them what it means.
I'm gonna let you answer all that.
Hey, Shane, that's why I told Jason to explain.
Well, I'll let the chief can explain this modern technology that we, the Sons have generously raised funds for. But it's a drone, as you know, it's about public safety. So this drone does a lot of stuff. We'll let the chief tell you some of the details, but it also can benefit the fire department and a fire rescue, also identifying people in homes that are on fire. So go ahead, Chief.
Yeah, biggest things for search and rescue at first, and we've got a lot of wooded areas, so we got thermal imaging on here. And of course, too, we got criminals that run from us playing in the woods, and we have been tracking that with thermal imaging and increasing our resources needed to catch somebody. And we can get real lifetime feed of critical incidents from another location, which will benefit us. Great, we appreciate it. And we're generous donation.
Thank you, Chief. Once again, we thank y'all for your hard work and your contribution, not only to our administration and the police and fire department, but to the citizens of Gocheck. We're blessed to have all of you and your volunteerism. We're blessed to have a wonderful veterans community here in Gocheck.
And you.
And can the rest of the city manager and the city attorney and the police department and fire chief and the firefighters if they want?
Paula, what happened? Didn't stay beside Lee?
Y'all go up.
Screw it around?
Get us.
Come on up here.
And also, they had just advised that they sent $4,500 to the flood victims in Texas. So their hard work continues to shine here at Gocheck.
Hey, thank y'all, Shane.
Yes, sir. See you later.
Okay, bud.
That brings us to our business agenda, consideration for abatement at 2879 Gardendale, Gocheck, Mississippi, by planning director, Mr. Scott Ankersen.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request to the code enforcement for to count to approve an abatement at 2879 Gardendale. The property is overgrown, grass weeds, vegetation, also has a lot of outside scorers, debris on site. Code enforcement has worked with trying to get in touch with this owner, actually had reached the owner, who have made proper notice of course, it's that statute. But also, the code enforcement really has gone above and beyond to try to get this property cleaned by the owner. I did speak today with Councilman Jackson, as this is his role, we very well versed on the situation. The code enforcement should not be answering questions, gentlemen, they have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ankersen. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item one? Do we have a motion from council to approve an abatement at 2879 Gardendale, Gocheck, Mississippi? And if we do, just a reminder, you need to mention the penalty if you are, and how it's to be assessed and collected.
So move. How do you want it? So how is the penalty, the, I know it's 1,500 or?
Fifty percent of the actual.
Fifty percent of the, of the.
Actual cost.
Actual cost of the, of the work.
And then what do you want to be a lien on the property, or what do you want it to be a civil?
As a lien on the property.
Not seconded up.
Okay, you wanted it to be 50% of?
Number 50.
Yeah, 1,500 or 50%.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Jackson, we have a second by Councilwoman Jamison, any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
Yeah, thank you for giving me all the information that I needed, so I can make sure that I vote correctly on this piece of property. And I've already looked at it way ahead of time, because I saw the signs in the, because I do rounds in that area. So, but I do appreciate for giving me the updates and keeping me informed, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilwoman Jamison?
No comments.
Councilman Minor?
Yeah, we already, we tried to contact him any way we could. We got no family members or anything that you can contact?
So what happened, actually, in this situation, the code enforcement officer Patterson was on location speaking to the neighbor. The neighbor gave our code enforcement officer a phone number for this gentleman. We reached out, used the phone number, and it ended up being a line that was disconnected. Officer Patterson went back out, talked to the neighbor again, and the neighbor actually contacted the owner with his own phone, and Officer Patterson was able to talk to him. That's when we discovered that he's actually at this time in like a sort of a sub-acute unit, maybe getting therapy, he's not, he doesn't live on the property. The tenants that were in the house on the property weren't very cooperative, wouldn't give names, there was no lease, even the property owner disclosed there was no lease. And he said that he just really didn't see what he was gonna do to get the property cleaned up in time soon. So at that point, we really had no choice but to move forward with the abatement process.
Yeah, you know how I feel about abatement already, so, I mean, I volunteer my time to go over there and cut the man's grass. I've already went and looked at it. Yeah, the grass needs to be cut, there's a few little old pieces of metal laying around, you know, so if we can get in touch with the man and he'll give me permission to cut his grass, I'll cut his grass for him. No problem whatsoever.
I'll assist you on that.
I don't want to go and find somebody that's already having a problem, that's in a nursing home or whatever, when it'll take me 45 minutes, hour of my personal time, to go over there and help the man clean his yard up.
We'd love that. We always address.
So if we can get in touch with somebody, or get me in touch with somebody, that I can go over there and cut the man's grass, I got a good lawnmower, there's no problem, buzz right through it, take me an hour.
All right, so just to inform you, I asked that same thing. So it was because of the circumstances, the only reason why I just didn't, just didn't not do the abatement. So I asked that same thing, is it a way that I could volunteer, because I've done it before? But the, the problem was, is the people who was living in the house, they didn't have a lease, none of that was, was a part of the.
They seemed to be gone. I would come to the door, nobody, nobody answers.
Yeah, they're gone, but he didn't wanna give their information, and, and, but they did, they, their due diligence, they contacted the man and everything like they're supposed to. My understanding that he was in a, like a rehab, I don't know if it's like a rehab for, not, not the drug rehab, but like a physical rehab.
Physical rehab.
And he's supposed to be out sometime, but the people who once lived there, because I drove by there and I asked people about that, asked someone about that property, whoever it was, they were just, pretty much just living in the house. You know what I'm saying? They could've cut the grass, they could've did whatever, but they didn't, they were just living in the house, and nobody wanted to give information.
We were squatters.
Yeah, squatters, that was the problem.
And the water's cut off, right?
Then lights and.
Put on one person at a time for the record and the Facebook caveat.
So that's, that's the reason why I just let them go ahead and handle it, you know, but if they, if they fix it well, if the guy reaches out, we can reach out to the guy and, you know, assist with cutting his grass, I'm, I'm down with assisting, because I've done it before.
I have no problem going over there, if we can get in touch with the man and, and tell him that I'll go over there and cut his grass for him, pick up the little bit of scrap metal, whether I put it in garbage cans, put it by the road, is no problem with me. Take me an hour, hour and a half to do the whole job. And I mean, I'd rather do that than find him $1,500, plus what the city's gonna charge me, it's gonna be $3,000 and getting the yard cut.
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Chansey.
If y'all want.
Sir? We can, go ahead, Ms. Chansey.
If y'all want to, you can approve the abatement, and then reach out to the man or get the neighbor or however y'all gotta hold done the first time. And if he gives you permission, and y'all do that, he will not incur any fines, any liens, no nothing. If he denies it, then you'll have the abatement in place, so it's not going to hurt him if you approve the abatement, if y'all willing to try and do that, I'm just telling you.
Right. And it can go into effect for 30 days anyways, because we gotta approve it on the minute, so it's gonna have, and then if there's progress before the 30 days, then it's done and it don't go away. It's only there if we ever need it up to 12 months, if we had to go back.
And do that.
Right. And it don't cost us to have to advertise again if it was to get like this.
All we can do is, women need the problem, it's not like with parents, we're just gonna, we would only pay somebody that, right? So you would say him the.
The 1,500 or whatever, 50% of the grass cut.
If it be $3,000, we'd wind up dead.
Right. It said 50% or less.
You know how contracts is on?
To mow grass?
Man, you'll have it.
So the, we can't keep the squatters out though, right? I mean, that's another problem.
Well, the squatters is left, they're not, they're no longer there.
I mean, for now.
Okay, Councilman Minor, you, you got anything else?
That's it.
Councilman Fuller?
Well, I'm, I'm in compliance with those two generals, I donate some time as well to assist this neighbor, sound like he's in need of some help, so let's go put more on, let's go do what I do. So I, I make a motion that we table this.
Well, you can't table it, because it's already been court or advertised, that we, the best option legally would be to approve it, and if it's done, then nothing ever happens anyways, and code enforcement's the one who calls and hires somebody. So code enforcement is gonna work with whoever, and they're gonna be the one having to communicate with the owner. So it's not like no reason to table it, because they're not gonna do nothing, as long as we follow through with doing whatever the owner allows us to do.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Okay. Councilman Elbin?
No comment.
I thank everybody for their hard work and willingness, and I do think this is, it's unfortunate that we have to spend resources before it gets to this point, and then we're able to try to work to agreement. But if, when we talk to the resident, as Councilwoman Jamison said, because if we would've found out, I go back to the, if we would've found out this information before the abatement process, then we could've talked to the owner and maybe worked something out. But instead, we found out some of this after we already have proceeded, so we got to be beneficial of taxpayer dollars. But I do wanna ask that the city manager get with the city attorney, or city attorney, city staff, all y'all get together and let's get the homeowner to sign that document with our Gocheck Police Department, since we know the house is vacant. So if an officer's riding by or a citizen reports somebody not supposed to be there, they can run them off, so we don't land squatters on the property. And if y'all can do that, that is what I would like to request, because obviously, that's what was there before without utilities. And we need to help the man take care of his property if he's in a assisted rehab type thing to get help, so we could help him in that way. We have a motion by Councilman Jackson, a second by Councilwoman Jamison, all in favor? Councilman George?
I.
Thanks. That brings us to our business agenda item number two, resolution approving the final FY 2025 budget amendments by our city clerk, Ms. Teresa Montgomery.
As I stated in the memo that I sent to you last week, these were the final amendments for fiscal year 2025. Generally, you would receive these at the second meeting in September. They're basically to perform budget cleanup, but because this is an election year, the latest that we can have these amendments on the books is tonight. So basically, we're, in previous years, I would have more definite numbers to do the amendments. These are based on the encumbrances today, the spending today, and what we generally spend from now to year end on recurring costs, personal costs, and any of our receipts that have come up so far in this quarter. Our last amendments were in April, which were also to meet the rules that, for amendments for an outgoing council. But if you have any specific questions, these are basically reallocated expenses, which we sum up revenue on other funds, that, just to add them to the fund balance. But there's, other than in the special funds for the respite, there is no new revenue being spent.
Thank you, Ms. Montgomery. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number two? None? Do we have a motion by council to approve the FY 2025 budget amendments?
So move.
Motion by Councilwoman Jamison, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Elbin, any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
Yeah, thank you for giving me all the information that I needed, so I can make sure that I vote correctly on this piece of property. And I've already looked at it way ahead of time, because I saw the signs in the, because I do rounds in that area. So, but I do appreciate for giving me the updates and keeping me informed, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilwoman Jamison?
No comments.
Councilman Minor?
Yeah, probably.
Councilman Fuller?
No comment.
Councilman Elbin?
No comment.
I just wanna thank our city clerk and her department for their hard work to, they do to keep our finances and the city in line, and make sure we're complying with the state auditors and everybody else. We have a motion by Councilwoman Jamison, we have a second by Councilman Elbin, all in favor? Councilman George?
Motion carries.
That brings us to our consent agenda. They'll be approved in one motion, as long as there, nobody wants to pull one. Consent agenda item number one, approval of the minutes from the recess council meeting held July 15th, 2025. Consent number two, received May 2025 finance reports. Three, approval of water and sewer adjustments for August 2025 in the amount of $16,439.35. Consent item number four, authorization to accept monetary donations for the City of Gocheck's Cruising Through the Decades event. Consent agenda item number five, approved to amend the comprehensive fee schedule for Parks and Recreation Department. Consent number six, authorization to remove broken equipment and vehicles from the City of Gocheck's inventory. Consent number seven, approval of the FY 2024 continuing disclosure submission prepared by Butler Snow LLP. Consent number eight, approval of task order number seven related to the 3 million gallon per day water supply and treatment plant. Does anybody wanna remove one?
I wanna pull six and eight.
Councilman Minor wants to pull consent number six and consent number eight. Anybody else wanna pull one? Do we have a motion to approve consent agenda item one through five and seven?
So move.
We have a motion by Councilman Jackson, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Minor, and all in favor? Councilman George?
The negative impact, I mean, negative economic impact personally on the federal fund. Opera fund, just now.
That was the how the federal government classified the ARCA money, which was the COVID money, is that we could use some for economic negative impacts, which had to do with personal costs.
Okay.
So that was where we had reallocated some of the police department's budget to kind of use up what was left of that money this past year.
Okay. So that's part, basic part of the grant of the ARCA, yeah. And the other one I have is the, the amphitheater. Is this the, I know this is not the, because it's saying, it's saying it's the expenditures. Is this the, you know, the like people we got working cleanup instead of?
This is reallocated out of the services purpose line to the other, to the supplies and the capital outlet. You know, we just built the artist facility, which was out of the lot. But some, you cannot look everything to a lot. It can only be a life of 10 years or more. So like the furniture and things that are not attached to the building that had to go into the building.
Right.
Were putting and have to come out of this lot.
Okay. And we haven't spent this total amount, it's just what we budgeted for, am I correct? Yeah, I'm saying like the, like the.
Two hundred sixty-three, two hundred twenty-three.
Yes, ma'am.
We'll see. I'll just pause it over here.
Okay. All right. And do we have any on the, the amount that we, I guess we have to do that at the end that we've received from the amphitheater, how much we receive within our.
They won't settle out till next month on the shows through.
The show costs.
Three dollar night.
Three dollar night, but in this fiscal year, it will capture all the revenue through three dollar night, and it will capture the venue rental from Williams, Billy Currington, and now, now if they add another show somewhere in there that falls in this fiscal year, you capture that too, but they will pay it when this fiscal year ends, but it's already budgeted.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilwoman Jamison?
No comments.
Councilman Minor?
No comment.
Councilman Fuller?
No comment.
Councilman Alvin?
No comment.
I just want to thank our city clerk and her department for their hard work they do to keep our finances and the city in line and make sure we're complying with the state auditors and everybody else. We have a motion by Councilwoman Jamison. We have a second by Councilman Alvin. All in favor? Councilman George? Motion carries. That brings us to our consent, that brings us to business agenda item number three is the approval of the docket of claims by the city clerk. They've already been provided to us. They were furnished online, printed in a packet if you picked one up at City Hall for review. Any public comments on business agenda item number three? Do we have a motion to approve the docket of claims provided, all entries there on are true, correct, properly entered, and not fraudulent? Motion by Councilman Fuller. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Minor. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilwoman Jamison?
No comment.
Councilman Minor? Councilman Fuller?
No comment.
Councilman Alvin?
No comment.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Councilman George? Motion carries. Thank you. That brings us to our consent agenda. They'll be approved in one motion as long as there, nobody wants to pull one. Consent agenda item number one, approval of the minutes from the recess council meeting held July 15th, 2025. Consent number two, received May 2025 finance reports. Three, approval of water and sewer adjustments for August 2025 in the amount of sixteen thousand four hundred thirty-nine dollars, thirty-five cents. Consent item number four, authorization to accept monetary donations for the City of Gojade's Cruising Through the Decades event. Consent agenda item number five, approved to amend the comprehensive fee schedule for Parks and Recreation Department. Consent number six, authorization to remove broken equipment and vehicles from the City of Gojade's inventory. Consent number seven, approval of the FY 2024 continuing disclosure submission prepared by Butler Snow LLP. Consent number eight, approval of task order number seven related to the three million gallon per day water supply and treatment plant. Does anybody want to remove one?
I want to pull six and eight.
Councilman Minor wants to pull consent number six and consent number eight. Anybody else want to pull one? Do we have a motion to approve consent agenda item one through five and seven? We have a motion by Councilman Jackson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Minor. And all in favor? Councilman George? Motion carries. That brings us to consent item number six, authorization to remove broken equipment vehicles from the City of Gojade's inventory by Ms. Teresa Montgomery.
As stated on the order, we're removing a lot of cars, a 2024 Chevrolet Silverado that was wrapped in tow, and a 2008 Ford F-250 that was wrapped in tow, and a 20-inch all-04 scrubber which was never on our inventory.
Councilman Minor, what's your question?
What are we doing with these vehicles? Are we selling them or are we crushing them? Or, I mean, a 2024 Silverado with a good motor, I mean, it's worth good money.
Well, this, the 2024 Silverado was belonged to the utility division. It is insured by H2O. Their insurance paid for the vehicle, and they also paid the difference for us to purchase another vehicle. So I'm not sure on this one, a lot of times when we tug them out, if we're going to keep the vehicle, we have to buy it back. We did not buy it back.
Right.
We just took the money, H2O paid the difference, and we purchased them and the vehicle.
So the vehicle's in, but it's part of city property?
Yes.
And we didn't take it back, we just gave it to the insurance company? Or the insurance just let us have?
The insurance pays. The rest vehicle belongs to the insurance.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Insurance company, once they pay, they should get the vehicle. But we're not buying it back. Okay, well, let them have it back. And what about the Ford truck? Are we selling it? Are we crushing it or?
It's probably sending out back.
Okay.
And at some point, though, when they have enough for them to come pick up, they will sell, and they sell for the, for we can get out.
Okay, I was just making sure that we are selling them and getting whatever we can get.
And we use a company by statute.
Two hundred fifty bucks.
Yeah, they practice, and some of the vehicles, the fire department will take them, they'll get them, stuff like that for training, and then we will sell the metal.
All right, wonderful. That was it.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Any other questions? Do we have a motion to authorize, authorization to remove broken equipment and vehicles from the City of Gojade's inventory? Motion by Councilman Minor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jackson. All in favor? Councilman George? Motion carries. That brings us to consent agenda item number eight, approval of task order seven relating to the three MGD water supply and treatment plant project in the amount not to exceed ninety thousand dollars by Ms. Jamison.
You want me to make a presentation, or do you want to?
Do you have a?
Have specific questions?
Well, I mean, in the email that I received, it seemed to me that we had already paid Wagner in for engineering one time for this, the total package?
No, sir.
And it took out?
No, sir.
No?
So the way this works is, we paid before we ever got any money, we paid Wagner Engineering to design this water treatment.
Right.
We subsequently got two point five million dollars under 219. When you get money under that federal bucket, the Corps of Engineers actually builds, designs, and takes over construction, and you are a third-party beneficiary at the end of it. But you have to call a cost share with that.
Yeah, we gotta pay.
We pay our cost share for the three fat metal building that will house those kids that will be the three MGD nano filtration plant. And I asked three or four times, and the Corps said, this was unique in that it was designed when they got it. The Corps did not design this. It was already designed, the city had the design. So what happens is, we paid Wagner, yes, to design it.
Yeah.
But once you let a bid for construction, there is what's called RPR, some people call it project management, but there is another facet that the designer has to, another role they have to play while construction is going on. We had already sent our cost share to the Corps. The Corps decided that because Wagner designed the facility, the Corps could not do RFIs, which is request for information, and submittals that are part of the construction process that requires an architect or an engineer because it was designed by Wagner. Therefore, they took ninety thousand and five hundred and twenty-six dollars and sent it back to us, which was part of our cost share we paid them, so that we could pay Wagner to do the necessary engineering insofar as RFIs and submittals on their project because Wagner signed it. So Wagner is responding to their contractor. Every time he says does an RFI or submit a, Wagner is responding to it and coordinating with the Corps. So that is what this is for.
Okay. Has Wagner come back and submitted any kind of bid on how much of the ninety thousand they're going to need? Or they're just going to take the full amount, no matter what?
Task order not to exceed ninety thousand dollars for them to do what I just stated. So that's kind of what's before you. But it costs the same, I mean, that's what the Corps figured in was the cost, and that's what the Corps gave us back. And they gave us the task order not to exceed the money of our cost share we got back. So it's not really costing you anything.
Yeah, it's just money we've already paid.
The Corps.
Yeah, it's just money we've already paid out that they gave us back.
Right, which is unusual.
Yeah.
But it's the only way we can make it work.
I just don't want to make.
And I didn't want to, if we had not done this, that project would be, stop work right now. And that's the last thing we need.
Mm-hmm. I just want to make sure that down the road, that they're going to say, okay, the prices went up from ninety thousand to a hundred and thirty, y'all owe us another forty thousand. I don't want to.
No, they're going to do it for ninety thousand, because that's what the task order's for.
Ninety thousand or less, if they, whatever it's less, then we just keep the money in our.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right.
So in other words, the work been passed from the Corps and the news to Wagner?
Yes, sir.
This is what we hope for to be done.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a motion to approve the task order number seven related to the three million gallon day water supply and treatment plant project in the amount not to exceed ninety thousand dollars?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Fuller. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Jamison. All in favor? Councilman George? Motion carries. That brings us to our citizen comments. We have one citizen comment this evening, and that is Mr. Taylor Sims. You can come here to the podium, state your first and last name, and state what you want to say, and you have three minutes if it takes three minutes. If it don't, if it gets close to one, Councilman Minor will hold this up, and then after that minute, we'll ask you and we'll talk to you later.
My name is Taylor Sims, and I've come out to say thank you.
And your address, Mr. Sims?
Sixteen forty-one Victoria Drive.
Thank you.
And I was getting off to work one afternoon, and a lot of work was going on there, and my, pretty much in the road there. And so I didn't know what was happening, so I called my councilman, Mr. Fuller. He came out and looked at the situation, and then he called the chairman at law, and then he called a few more people.
I was out there with you.
Yeah.
Now I remember your face.
Yeah. And also, I called the mayor, so, and you all came out to assess the problem that I had, so, and we want to thank you for coming out and evaluating my problem. I'm looking for you guys to help me finish it.
Yes, sir.
So we need to train it and all that, yeah, also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. We appreciate you coming to thank us for our work, and we appreciate your concern. And Ms. Jamison has, I did make her aware of the issues, and like I said, she has to get with engineering and public works, and they have to assess everything. The other issue she'll get with the county on, and they were going to follow through her and public works got with them to follow through, address and the other, but they got to follow DUC product calls. Okay? You're welcome. That brings us to council comments. It's the first council meeting of the month, so we will start with Councilman George.
I have no comments other than happy birthday, Casey.
Thank you, Councilman George. I appreciate that. Councilman Jackson?
Yes, we got two birthdays. Don't forget, Bond, his birthday as well. I don't really have anything for today, so, no comments.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilwoman Jamison?
I just want to thank the city staff. They've been very helpful to me over the past month, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilman Minor?
I ain't really got no comments. I think Councilman Jamison was going to lead us in a birthday. For Mayor Bond. If everybody stand up, you know what I mean? We'll sing happy birthday to the mayor, y'all. We'll make a day special for him, you know what I mean?
Just stay seated.
Great idea.
I appreciate that.
Councilwoman Jamison will lead us in the.
You might be better off asking.
Better up, Casey.
You better ask Ms. Bilbo out here for her to lead us, because Councilwoman Jamison said no. I appreciate Councilman Minor wanting to sing happy birthday and get everybody, but it appears that our talent, musical talent is over at the Sound Amphitheater. Well, Ms. Jamison and Mr. Ankerson are musical talented. They can do it. They can do it. Okay, go ahead.
Happy birthday?
Yeah, go ahead.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, you Casey. Happy birthday to you.
Thanks, y'all. I have to say, that's the first. I've honored to be wished happy birthday by all y'all, and I would have to say I was surprised. I thought it was a joke when Councilman Minor was messing with Councilwoman Jamison, but he was sincere. That means a lot, that y'all really were adamant to sing, so thank you again. Anything else, Councilman Minor?
That's it.
Councilman Fuller?
Yes, I'd like to thank the city staff as well, Ramona, and all the ones that showed up for the, Mr. Sims and I, and Westgate when we had those issues. I think the city is gelling, we're coming together to do great things. I think we're going to do a lot of great things. Matter of fact, I know we are. And I'm looking around, I thank Scott, Mr. Dino, and all of y'all. Welcome me, I appreciate all that, and I feel welcome. I really do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Fuller. Councilman Alvin?
Like everybody else, thank our city employees for the work you do each and every day to make sure the city runs efficiently. Also, our contract partners for what they do for the city as well. I noticed we got the new UDOs, updated UDOs. Are they updated to on the city website?
Yes. They have been.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Alvin. I just want to thank everybody again. It's been an honor and privilege to serve, but you know, this past week, the end of the month, we went to MML, and I cannot thank again our newly elected officials, and Councilman Jackson attended. But it was a great conference, educational, and our new elected officials are eager to learn and to be a leader and be in a role as a councilman and the mayor. Other cities don't have some of their elected officials that are really gung ho wanting to learn and do. So we're blessed here in Gojade, and we are going to all work together, and it just was a great feeling. And I want to thank all the newly elected officials for your eagerness to want to learn. I also want to thank the city staff for accommodating us, make our recommendations, our transition with the new board. I thank y'all, their learning curve, as with everything, but I think y'all are doing a great job, and I think we will all adjust to all the new change and the new council, and I thank y'all for helping them. I also want to say that our coastal delegation went to the Mississippi, you call it House Party at the Nushoba County Fair, and I went with my fellow colleagues, council members to represent our city, along with DMR and state delegation, the fellowship, and tried to sell and promote our city, and it was a big success. It was hot. But I thank the Philadelphia mayor and them in Nushoba County for giving us a warm hospitality and a warm welcome. And I thank all of our community partners. H2O was there representing the cities they represent, and I thank them. So it was a great time. Football and cheerleading registration, I want to say, remind everybody, that is still going on.
Seven and eight and cheer still on.
Seven. Okay, seven and eight and cheer, so please register. As you know, Gojade Gators, our high schools are getting ready to kick off, so support all of our youth. I also want to thank, this morning, I received a phone call from the school. They, I said, called the police department. They called. Our police department responded. I was there, thanked DMR, I thanked our school officials. We had a visitor in Gatorland today, and we did have a real live alligator. So we welcomed the alligator, and DMR has relocated the alligator, and we appreciate their help in that matter. Deputy Chief Bond has left, but hopefully he'll see it later. We were going to wish him a happy birthday too, but he is gone, and I'm proud to share my birthday. So my birthday, since I have to work on my birthday, instead of celebrating, I had one, one request, and I'm going to call each department head out and ask them to say one positive thing about Gojade, Mississippi. We will start with our city manager, Ms. Jamison.
Y'all have heard me say this before, but I think we have the best staff of any city on the couch, and it, I've worked a lot of places in my life, but it is very unusual to come to work, as much fun as this can be, and have fun with the people you work with, and always be a team, and everybody always going the same direction. It's very rare, and when we do that, we can all accomplish things. All of you, I can't always say this about cheering up, but they don't make it any better.
Thank you, Ms. Jamison. Our city attorney, Mr. Dennis?
Yes, sir. In my position, I get to interact with almost every department at some point or another, and I would probably echo what Ms. Jamison said. You have an extremely competent staff, whether it's the courts, the police department, fire department, planning, rec, public works, all the top level. I've seen other cities that don't have this good staff, and I've seen this, this city when it didn't have this good staff, so we're blessed.
Thank you, Mr. Dennis. Chief Bevers?
That's wrong. I'm a transplant from here, so I was drawn to Gojade years ago, and I was stationed here. No other city around here is the same kind of, you buy to it wherever you want to say, and wildlife, and it's a special, it's a special place.
Thank you, chief. And just a little bit about chief, his first day, and he will be coming up on his anniversary, and we will have a celebration on his anniversary at the Sound Amphitheater with our sister cities and the county, a partnership to celebrate the Hurricane Katrina and where we've come. And Chief Bevers, that was his first day on the job here in the city of Gojade, Mississippi. So we congratulate you on your upcoming anniversary.
I'll see you in like twenty years.
Ms. Montgomery, our city clerk.
I'm thankful to my staff. They do a lot to help me to get through all this, and I'm thankful to the directors being, you know, extra nice this time of year, and I'm a little bit crazy. They've done a good job this year, keeping the budget in the line.
Good. Thank you, Ms. Montgomery. Ms. Morgan, our public works director.
I'm thankful for my staff and how hard they work. Meter readers out there reading seven thousand meters a month, and they have really hard tasks, so I'm really proud of all of them. And all the directors who have great teams, where like, who's the, I can't even picture them. It was a great asset to the city. And then our partnership with H2O and with Waze, Waze Pro. H2O and with, we, we broke, that's the wrong one, but I'm very thankful to those folks.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Ms. Bilbo, our Parks and Rec director.
I am very thankful for all of the employees in Parks and Recreation, we have six guys and four and five of them, including myself, that make parks and recreation work. With that being said, I am also proud of the parents of Goche youth, we have had record participation in Goche youth football and cheer. When I left the fittings earlier, we had a hundred and fourteen football players registered, and we have fifty-six cheerleaders.
Wow.
That is a hundred and seventy kids that we have to fit from Thursday through Tuesday, and you're not thankful for that. But we are getting through it, hopefully by Tuesday evening at six o'clock, we'll have all a hundred and seventy of them fitted, so we can get uniforms started, we joined a new league last year, and I think that's what has really brought football back to the city of Goche, so, I am very proud of my staff and the parents for rent, and paying for that children's play.
Good job, thank you, Ms. Bilbo, and we'll go to you, Mr. Scott Ankersen, our planning director, and our city clerk, Ms. Jancy is not available, I mean, city manager, I apologize.
Man, I can sit here and pontificate about staff, I agree with everything that's been said about the city staff, more specifically, I guess, right now, with the dawn of the new budget, I can say that I'm most proud of my staff and all staff from the city, is how frugal we are, you know, we have, for example, wonderful building maintenance manager who has saved city thousands with the work he's done on the artist facility down here, we have an excellent vehicle maintenance mechanic back here who saves the city thousands of dollars, but we're driving fifteen-year-old trucks back here, and he keeps them humming like sewing machines. All of my staff, the things that we, that they can do to help the city save our budget and make Ms. Teresa's job as easy as we can, I just, I think it's amazing what we do with that, and I'm just proud of every single one of them.
Thank you, Ms. Ankersen. Chief Latch?
I echo with everyone that said, my staff, they're kind of like unsung heroes, I guess, but you don't see them often unless it's not like it's an emergency or something catastrophic, and they're there to do what they can to help, so, I'm really proud of them, you know, we've got a bunch of you guys that went through training, and we've been training them every day, even in the heat, you know, they've been going out in their turnouts and getting hot and sweaty, and, you know, almost to the point of dehydrating and stuff like that, so, just, I'm really proud of how they've been, you know, this year, and, you know, we did go through a big turnover lately, but I'm proud to say, right now, we only have, I think, two positions, and one of them is because someone quit, and the other one is because you had a guy retire from thirty-two years to thirty-one years being Goche.
Good, and thank you, Chief Latch, and Brian, with our H2O, our service provider for our utilities.
We are, we're thankful for the work we do in the city, for being able to work in city Goche, how well everyone works with us, reiterate what everybody else said about the staff, you know, we do have a great staff, come together when needed. I will say, I'm thankful to see the groundbreaking of the new three MGD plant, the asphalt started being pulled up, we've been working with the engineers and the planners to learn, you know, differences in how the drawings were laid out versus what was actually ran, so, all these lines that were put in previously for this plant, everything's coming together, glad to see that.
Yeah, well, we are, you know, as Ms. Jancy said, when you are privatized, it's like a marriage, with your public work service provider and your garbage, and I'm glad to say, our marriage, it was ever so good when we partnered and married H2O, and it's been ever so great that we continue to have our marriage with Waste Pro, who's right down the road and readily accessible to help us, and we're blessed to have great service providers that are community partners, so, we thank y'all for your hard work. I once again thank all of you, you all said something positive, and everything you said, I echo, it is true, we are thankful for every one of you, but I want to say thank you also to you, Sam. Citizens wanted digital meeting to record this live, and we can thank Sam over here, he does a great job, and you do all of our public press releases, and you do a great job at this, or the moment when the media is calling, and we got to get on something in minutes, so, we thank you. So, thank all of the staff, and that clap is for Sam and all of you, we are ever so grateful.
I'm opening red for the press.
Okay, so now let's go, no, I'm not, I'm not opening that, I'm scared they might have put something up in there. Okay, that brings us, Ms. Montgomery, I mean, Ms. Jancy, did you have anything else, Ms. Montgomery? And Mr. Dennis has something else unfortunately for us.
Yes, sir, may I, if we could, go into closed session, just turn the executive over.
Okay, do we have a motion to go into closed second session to see if executive is appropriate?
No move.
We got a motion by Councilwoman Jamison, do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Councilman Jackson, all in favor, Councilman George?
Motion carries.
We're in closed session, y'all, so every...